He did.
He did, I, yeah. I left him a message, I didn't hear back on how we got it or not.
All right, it's six o'clock, folks, we'll get started with our regular, uh, city commission meeting and, uh, we'll have our call to order and pledge and, uh, let's see. Robert, would you please do the, uh, invocation and, uh, uh, Ms. J.
I knew you was looking at Mr. Harvey, okay.
Where everybody now, if you're in place. Everybody coming to the city in the Lord, thank you for this blessing, thank you for our help, thank you for allowing us to be here today, by the way, pray that as we go forward in this meeting, that all things out of here benefit to community of Rosemont too in Mount Pleasant. We ask for due protection over us and our families through holiday season, Father. We thank you this time of season, you for goodness, the ability to celebrate our new son Jesus. Ask protection when you leave here tonight, we will be having great discussions, we will thank the Father and Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Roll call, please, ma'am.
There, why?
Here.
Jacqueline Runberg here. Mike Davis, app. Eric Harvey.
Here.
And Willie Alveson, I'll go after.
You may come late.
Yes, she may be here a little later. All right, number four, approval correction of minutes from prior meeting, we have two, the study session in November the 10th and the regular meeting in November the 16th.
You're wrong with those dates, because they're six days apart, let me look at that real quick.
Yeah, that's something.
Oh, no, remember, we did the, we had a study session on Wednesday.
That's right.
That's right, okay. So it is correct.
Better than today. I'll entertain a motion once we've had an opportunity to review.
Move that we accept the, uh, a minute.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number five, awards, presentations and appointments, mayor's appointment with the recreation committee. And I'm sorry, I don't have that young lady's name.
Alicia Busby.
Alicia Busby, and she was recommended by the young lady that has asked to step away. And, uh, I know when I've been around, she's always there with a camera. I didn't know who she was, so they told me it's a lady with a camera.
And she also was recommended by the recreation commission.
Yes.
To bring her name to you.
Correct. So, uh, I'd like to make that appointment and entertain a motion in a second.
Move that we accept Alicia Busby as the, uh, recreation committee appointee.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we suspend the rules and move item 11 to immediately follow.
11H.
11H, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
To immediately follow 5A.
All right. Bob? Uh, what we've got tonight is, is, uh, we got our audit back Friday morning. Uh, I'll let Bob go over all of it, it's our first audit through, uh, our new partnership. Um, and just from the first meeting and working with these folks, and I happen to know somebody that's part of this now, uh, I think we're gonna have a great working relationship. So Bob, it's, uh, your floor, my friend.
One, one question, Corey, do we have to vote on his motion to suspend the rules?
You should both, yeah.
Okay, we can.
Okay.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. One second.
Can he made the motion?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. No, thank you. It's December, I'm trying to get through this.
So now you're officially.
I told Kate early on, I said, we, we do have a shortage of them, and she sent this to me, and I went, I thought we had a shortage of them. Bob, cheers now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thanks for those kind words, uh, like you said, this is our first year, uh, working on the audit, and, um, I think it, uh, went really good for, I mean, for first year audit, uh, you guys were great to work with. Basically, um, you've got a report, um, and you've drafted up, um, and I'll just hit a few highlights on it, but, you know, if there's any questions or anything, uh, feel free to ask. In the report, main things are, um, it's, um, it's audited under governmental audit standards, um, it's an unmodified clean opinion, uh, the audit report has that. Copies of the audit report, um, will eventually be public record, uh, they will be submitted to the Tennessee Comptroller Treasury, uh, to be posted on their website. It's also, um, this audit, uh, was a little different than last year, and the fact that you had over 750,000 dollars reimbursable federal expenditures, that throws into what we call a single or uniform guidance audit, and then with that, all the triggers is, the audit report will be submitted to the, uh, federal audit, uh, clearinghouse in Washington, D.C. as well. Do you think to recap out of the report, to, um, if you're looking at the report, it's on pages, I think, seven and eight. It's about, what, eighty page reports, and a lot of data in here, I won't try to be very brief with it. You have a net position of, um, report, and what that is, that is, um, that is a set of books where basically your lenders and probably some oversight agencies are looking at, so, um, main areas, you have about, um, five point one million dollars in net position, four point seven of that, four point seven million, that is unrestricted. Income statement wise, um, you had just under six hundred thousand dollars positive change revenues versus expenditures, that was up from the prior year, the prior audit, I should say, of three hundred forty seven thousand dollars. And, uh, one thing to clarify too, that I didn't mention earlier, uh, this audit, uh, takes you through June 30th, 2021. Also on the governmental, uh, fund statements, this is what you actually manage and, uh, budget off of, and it's a little bit different, um, recap than what I just, than what was on the previous pages, but, um, end of the year with a four point seven million dollar fund balance, approximately two and a half million dollars of that is unrestricted. And this is off your, um, all your governmental funds, that'd be your general fund, capital project fund, et cetera. And then about two point one million dollar positive change revenues versus expenditures. And it all went over two different things here, but on pages fourteen, sixteen of the report, there's a reconciliation of how you get between those two different, um, and we call it sometimes two, two different sets of books, but, um, both sets of books provide value to, uh, folks reading the audit reports. Um, your audit report gets read by anybody from citizens all the way up to file holders, so everybody has their own specific information, uh, they want to see out of it. And then the, uh, utility funds, I believe those are on, um...
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. And, uh, they're also called, uh, proprietary funds. So this includes the four utilities, it would be electric, gas, uh, water and sewer fund, and then the sanitation fund. The end of the year with about thirty nine million dollar net position, thirteen million dollars of that is unrestricted. For the year in June 30th, 2021, there was a positive change, um, for all four utilities, when you combine them, two point eight million dollars, so, uh, um, positive change in operating income, that's your day-to-day operations, and then, um, and then if you go down, there's a few miscellaneous items, and then you get down to, to a little over two million dollars. Page twenty six of the report covers just footnote, which means, you know, a lot of information, capital asset debt, um, just events, um, that occurred during the audit period that were required to disclose, and then, um, page seventy shows you a detailed spreadsheet of, um, how you were owed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, in terms of awards, and also that, I think was through the USDA program. Um, one thing I'm happy to report on, this starts on page, I believe, seventy four, actually seventy two. Uh, you add sometimes, it's a lengthy report, where, you know, what happens, how do we know if we can find it or not? Well, that starts towards the end of the report on page seventy two, and I'm happy to report there's no findings in here, but if there were, that's where it would, it would actually be on, uh, the, page seventy six. And that's kind of a checklist we go through to basically say there's no findings. And then just a couple other matters, just for, uh, uh, future reference, um, this will impact your future audits, uh, if you were ever to have, um, leases in the future, there is a new debt management policy that was prescribed by the state comptroller's office, um, after January 1st of 2022, um, if you have over a hundred thousand dollars leases, the new leases in aggregate, um, you are required to have, to fill out a form to get those approved.
So we have to go to the state comptroller before we can go to you?
Yeah. And I believe they even outlined, and I think they even said, if you check all the boxes, you can do it hopefully in fifteen days, I think, I think both are goals. Also, you know, you know, a lot of, um, activity on the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, grant funding, and, um, um, my understanding is you're eligible for some of that, and that's going to be, um, um, with that, a lot, I'm sure a lot of opportunity, but a lot of, uh, there's gonna be a lot of clients involved, so, um, so a little, um, I just want to give a heads up on that, um...
If they ever decide on what you can and can't spend the money on, and you've actually got to approve it.
Yeah. Approvals are very important in that process.
Yes.
And documentation of it, too. That's all I had in the report, um, if there was anything else you had questions on, or, um, maybe you go over, if you've been after meeting, um, if you need anything, if you need more explanation on, feel free to let us know.
One thing, it was only twelve thousand dollars, but we did notice in sanitation that we ran, um, a little behind, and that's all because of the increase in the dumping fees, and so, uh, we were over budget on that, and probably will be again next year, we'll just have to, to budget accordingly, but I see those going down anytime soon.
No, I think for this next year, we better get ready for it, I mean, it's here. And it's not gonna get any cheaper.
There's more people, there's more trash.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
But that's just a small thing, in case you noticed that.
Any questions for Bob, the commissioners? Thank you.
And if any of you needed email, if you, after you spend time looking at it, you want to reach out to him and ask a question, I'm happy to forward it on to him to get an answer for you, and I'll tell the commissary commissioner the same thing.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you, Bob, and thanks to all our staff. We had a very nice exit, in our world, we call it an exit interview, um, and they're gonna come back with some recommendations, which is nice to see, that say you work well with your audit group, uh, they, they identify it before it becomes an issue and you take care of it.
That's great.
Uh, they were complimentary on our, uh, warehousing of some documents, and that's always nice to hear, and that's a lot of work by Loretta and a lot of the folks sitting in this room, it's not just Loretta, it's a lot of other folks. And we don't need to lose sight of that, because it's important, and to hear that come from an audit group that has defined documents, I can only imagine how much nicer that is. So, uh, thank you, Bob, very much, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, have a happy holiday.
All right, we need a motion to accept.
We do, we do.
Move that we accept the, uh, financial audit report.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right. Number six. Completion Review of Unfinished Business Ordinance 2021-1083, this is a public hearing and the final reading, an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, dealing with purchasing repealing the existing Chapter 6 and adopting a new Chapter 6 updating the purchasing rules, regulations and procedures.
And Mayor Commissioners, as Mayor said, this is a public hearing, final reading, so we have in front of you something that looks like this, the bullet points of the changes in the, um, am I looking at the right, right one? I'm sorry, that's, that is for, that's not for purchasing has in the copy, there, we have some highlights, and the second page has some bullet points on here.
Yeah.
So, um, we wanted to give a little bit more leeway, we've gone from five hundred to a thousand, uh, just because five hundred doesn't buy, the purchase order amount went from five hundred to a thousand, you know, five hundred, about everything you needed.
Yeah.
We also had in there that we could go up to twenty five thousand dollars for, um, real property because the state allows that, but our charter does not, so we've, we've taken it back to ten, but those bullet points cover just about everything in there, and the reason we put this off for a month is to make sure it matches up with our, uh, internal control policy, which is at the end of the agenda today, too, so we've gone over it pretty much with a fine tooth comb.
And like Kate says, you, if you look at this hard copy of it, it's highlighted on exactly what the changes are, and you're...
A lot of it was just simply titles, uh, if that title doesn't exist anymore, we'd say, or doesn't need a lot of those type of changes.
And the Lord knows, five hundred dollars won't get you much anymore.
Mm-mm.
All right, this is a final reading and a public hearing, uh, anyone here care to speak on this? All right, showing no one, please let the minister reflect, we had no one that cared to speak. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we pass on this 2021-181083.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, ordinance 2021-1084, again, this is another public hearing and a final reading, an ordinance levying a privilege tax upon the occupancy of any hotel or motel or any place in which rooms, lodging or accommodations are furnished at transients for consideration.
Mayor Commissioners, this is, we're calling the hotel motel tax, it does include RFPs as well, and the max that we can go to is four percent, and that's what this ordinance is allowing us to do. Other cities and the county have granted, have done at a higher rate, this is the highest rate we can go to at this point.
I think Columbia's five percent, and...
Yeah. And the county is, as well.
We're just a little, thank the Lord, we caught it, so we can start running a little something up.
Do.
So, that'll be nice.
We just gotta figure out how to get it set up, if they start getting taxed.
That's exactly right.
Have you already notified all these people?
We have not, no, the, the next step is to learn the process, and we'll be reaching out to the, uh, finance director of the county on the best way to get started on that. I'm assuming they're just gonna pass that cost on to their renters.
Yeah, what you think?
Yeah.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, anyone here care to speak? Please let the minister reflect, no one did. Entertain a motion.
Move that we accept, uh, ordinance 2024-2021-1084.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right. C, ordinance 2021-285, public hearing final reading, an ordinance amending Title 10 after one of the municipal code relating to livestock and domestic foul within the city limits. And, um, again, this is a public hearing and a final reading, but, um, I'm gonna ask and I'm gonna make a motion that we defer this. Kate and I, and Kate's book was the other commissioner, we just feel like we were probably getting a little ahead of the game in that we know there are some residents here that already have them, um, that they either, A, weren't aware that there was the permitting process for getting that done, and didn't, um, or B, just didn't do it, period. And part of that could have been for lack of an understanding that you had to do it. So we're gonna go back and do our homework before we present this.
And also that the, um, okay, my brain is still dead. Uh, uh, the, um, boys' club also has a thing that they allow kids to have them during the summer, so many to, until they get grown, and they have to bill the cook and all of that, so, that also...
But we need to figure this out before we keep moving forward with it, just what is right and what's wrong.
My understanding from Corey is if you, uh, defer this indefinitely, it doesn't come back on the agenda until somebody requests it, so there's not a temporary...
Yeah, I think we could specifically say we defer it until a commissioner requests it to be placed back on the agenda.
And that'll be pretty, pretty quick, because I just think we need to get through this. I can tell you that, uh, I received some emails over it, and it was fifty fifty split, dead even.
That's about what it was, too.
And, uh, we're on the hotel tax, I got some on it, everybody was for it, with one exception, I'm sorry. So, uh, I noticed, uh, the daughters, did y'all come to speak to that? Yeah. You're still welcome to come up and speak to it, we'd love to hear your comments. Okay.
And I do, my, I'm not gonna talk, it's who's gonna talk, but, because I'm emotional, but my comment is, I don't know how it's gonna regulate, if you agree that everybody can have all the animals, how do you regulate them, keep them clean, because that's our issue, I don't care what they have, but we suffer where we're located and where these people, animals are located, we suffer from the odor, and we have addressed it, and, um, that seems to be fixed, and I don't, I feel, I pay taxes, too, and, um, if you have, I mean, when this issue came up, I guess, two years ago, it really surrounded our area, and they talked about, well, let's just have a thing where we just have ten, everybody can have ten chickens. Well, where we live, we would be surrounded by ten, 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 and then they just start across the street, well, it's like I live in a chicken farm, you know, I move from town, we move from the country to be in a city, and, um, you know, it just seems like it's excessive, and I'm not talking about a couple of pet rabbits, I'm talking about cages.
That, that's the reason why we're deferring this and, and starting...
We weren't thinking about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and starting from scratch.
No, because I see on Facebook when people write and say, I think it's unfair that people have to get rid of their chickens, that's great, but you don't live like we do, and, um, it's chickens, rabbits, dogs, and they're caged, and they're all caged up against our fence, so we build a deck so we can sit out and enjoy our yard, and we can't, because the odor is so bad in the summer, I had people over for dinner one night, and they said, what in the world is that smell? And well, neighbors, they couldn't want to eat out there, so...
You said your name, I just want to wrap it.
Yeah, but, but Mr. Daughery's gonna come, Mr. Daughery, if he would, come on forward and give your name and your address.
Yeah, you face Washington, and the problem neighbor is when it faces college.
But the person that owned it, they're not even near this smell, because they have, like, two lots.
Yes, I remember, I remember talking to you about it.
So if you, if you don't mind, state your name and your address, please, just so we got it all right.
Okay, my name's Ken Darkerdy, and I live on 504, uh, Washington Avenue. And for me, when I first moved in here, uh, I didn't notice it right at first, but then as the summer goes on and gets hotter, and that's really the problem, like right now, it's the wintertime, you don't notice it that much, but when it gets hotter, and I, I say the honest with you, I never realized that there was always rabbits back, I mean, times up, and then there's chickens and the dogs, so as long as the wind is blowing the other way, it's not really a problem, you know, and I don't really care, I don't care about the noise, the noise to me, it doesn't really matter, I don't really care, but it's more just the, the smell, you know, because if I had my friends there, we, we can't really sit back there, you know, and, and really, I, I, I want to be neighborly, and it's really, it's, it's difficult, uh, to bring issues up, you know, and, and I, I don't like to, but, um, after a while, you get, you get to the point where you, you start making it angry, because you can't go out and enjoy your own stuff, but I spent seven, seven thousand dollars on the debt, I couldn't even sit up there, you know, and I, you know, I'm trying to make my house nice and, and, you know, I want to be neighborly and everything, and I didn't want to cause trouble before, and so, and, and matter of fact, the, the one lady that came and said, you know, she was having a petition and everything, and at first, I said, well, if you just had a couple, you know, to keep it clean and, and so forth, maybe I wouldn't do that, but that's the thing about it, after I signed it, I, I told her to scratch my name off, because who's going to be overseeing all this? That's my thing, is who's gonna oversee, you know, if you do allow this, you know, that, that's the thing, too, is who's gonna oversee it, who's gonna, we're gonna have someone watching out, or, you know, it's just, it creates a whole bunch of problems.
That's the reason we're deferring...
Very hard to regulate, yeah.
Yeah, it's very, it's very difficult.
And checking up, I'll call it, and just to, as it moves forward, you know, whatever we decide to do, th- there's, let me just say, there's a lot of things that you've got to consider, and, and we need to get that done, but, this, this group and goes through that, and that's the reason why we're...
And I, I totally understand it, because it's, it's an issue for everybody.
Absolutely.
It's really the community. I mean, you know, because it's create other problems that we may not even be thinking about, you know, I mean, as far as who knows what kind of disease and so forth, feed brings rats, so forth, you know, it, it's just a lot of things, you know, to think about, but...
That's the reason why we push the brake.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that, too, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't want to make a racket, and, and next thing you know, you've got more issues than you've heard.
That's right, that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to head off right now.
And I want, I want to be neighborly.
Yeah, but thank you very much, and thank y'all for coming. All right, I've made a motion to defer, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And we'll not have that back on the agenda until it's brought to us, to, by Commissioner.
All right, number seven, monthly report from mayor, and all I wanted to say was thanks to the residents and the business owners for all their decorating, we got some homes around here that are beautiful this year, as we do every year, but there are some that the folks have really gone over and above what they ordinarily do, so Merry Christmas to everybody and thank you. Also, uh, if you get a chance, you run into Dr. Jackson over at the high school, he has been named the county principal of the year, so that's, uh, that's, uh, a nice honor for Dr. Jackson, well deserved. Monthly financial and budget report, please, ma'am.
We got your, uh, financial report, uh, emailed to you, um, the only thing of note, again, I think we know that already, that the, uh, sanitation ban in, slightly, not, not hugely, but slightly in the red, and it's something that when we do budgets, this should work on, really, um, make a, look at that and, um, make some, some tough decisions on, because we, we can't continue to, um, run a fund in red. But did anybody have any questions on anything that they received in, uh, email?
Questions from Loretta?
No.
Not hearing any, entertain a motion to approve it.
I saw move that.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
Mayor Commissioners, just want to pass on it, if you driven down Locust Street, they're making a lot of progress there, uh, definitely looks a lot better already, mentioned this at the study session, but, uh, Project Brazil, uh, went through the Murray County IDB, and the purchase was approved of the back building and the lot next to it, has a, it will be closing in February, if everything goes as planned, which I anticipated, so that'll be a, a new business within Mount Pleasant, and we'll be able to announce and talk about who they are.
That's right. Thank you.
And Merry Christmas, so, I'll actually put that in the minutes.
Good, yeah. Number 10, special reports from other departments, wastewater.
Yes, um, as you all know, um, we opened bids, uh, December 8th for the largest wastewater treatment plant, um, improvement, and it was woefully over what we anticipated, the project that started at around nine is now up to twenty million. So, we committed, just verbally, I, I told them it would need to be a vote from you, but we committed to USDA conference call last Friday that we would use our ARP money, which is about a million four, and we'd take two hundred fifty thousand in cash out of our capital fund that we've created for wastewater projects, which is up to a million now, growing, um, regularly, we keep making payments into it, and so we have another call in January to determine what kind of grants will be available through USDA, and just... and just try and figure out how can we take out, we met today and already agreed to take out the generator only because we believe we can get that using FEMA money. That's a million dollars right there. We're not taking it out. We need it, but we can maybe find another source for that. So I don't really have a recommendation yet until, and these bids are good till February eighth. So we either work this out between now and February eighth or the bids are, are gone. But we're, we're working really hard to try and have a recommendation to you in January meeting. And I do want to point out too, that I, I know I complained publicly in these meetings of how long it was taken to get approved through USDA. I believe those holdups have cost us probably a million or two million dollars. And I think the engineers agree with me on that, that we should have been bidding this out in June, July, a long time ago. So I think we, but rather than pointing fingers, we all just need to get it done. But I think that, that we just need to keep that in mind as we're talking to other people, funding sources, and asking USDA for as much grant money as possible, that, that we keep that on the table too. So then the other thing I just want to mention, Rainey Street was approved. We will start going out for bids on that. We have that in the budget at about just under half a million dollars. I'm hoping that's too high, but we're being prepared for it being that high. We will be bidding that out, probably coming to you in January to approve, maybe February. I'm not sure how quickly we can get that out. And then on the trunk line rehabilitation, S and P Liner Company continues to not stay on timeframe that we want them. They said they'll be out there the first week in January, but they can't finish the project in the timeframe that the contract states. We may be looking at liquidated damages with them. They'll get the project done, but we, we have, you know, language in the contract where we can look at liquidated damages. But we are bugging them on a regular basis to just get out here and finish it. Once they get out here, it should take two weeks if we have decent weather. So pretty much that's where we are on most of our sewer projects. I wish I could tell you differently, but it's, everything is much higher than we anticipated.
Just to catch the public up, I have already been in touch with Senator Blackburn, as well as the governor's office about opportunities. It started out at two million, then it went to five point six and now it's seven point five. I think they're probably going to go land on a number bill.
Right, but we can't land on a number until USDA says what they can give us. So it's, everything's tied to each other.
In Kate's point about USDA, I, you know, I'm not here, it took too long, but in their defense, they are wandering around anxiously right now because they can't get a director appointed out of Washington. And so it's one of these right now when you go to USDA. So I was in contact with a gentleman last night. We spent a good hour on the phone. I feel good about where we're headed. We are actually going to sit down with Jim Tracy right after the first of you. Jim has agreed to sit down and talk to me. At least that who was the former director of USDA for the state. And so he's, you know, pick his brain. My gosh, he got us what he gobs.
Yeah.
And so he's agreed to sit down with us.
That's great.
So good start. So anyway, I'll keep everybody, we will keep everybody informed. So that's where we are. It was a shock. Let me just say that. All right, we don't get a motion or anything on that.
Correct, we do not.
All right, number 11, new business ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten eighty six. This is a first reading, an ordinance amending Title eighteen, Chapter one of the municipal code relating to water and sewer system administration.
And mayor commissioners, as I explained in the study session, this is where we have a letter of availability and the developer wants to either do houses, houses or something commercial. It costs us to tell the developer whether or not there is sufficient water supply available. In most cities, and we want to now, we pass that cost on to the developer rather than us paying it ourselves. So that's what this ordinance accomplishes and really developers are not surprised at all when we tell them that they're going to have to pay for the engineers to tell us what's available, what the pressure is, that kind of stuff. Have I missed anything, Corey, you want to expand on?
No, we're basically just passing on costs. That we're being charged to the developer.
Yeah.
Almost every other community does this already.
Does your packet have the exhibit to it?
Let me just find it.
Okay. Mine doesn't.
Any questions?
The feasibility application.
Not entertain a motion?
Another motion we pass on is twenty twenty one dash ten eighty six.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. B, ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten eighty seven. Again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten seventy five, that ordinance appropriating revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July the first, twenty twenty one, and ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty two, providing an effective date.
Mayor and commissioners, this is our first budget amendment for this fiscal year. And this is the paper in front of you that kind of highlights the changes. One of the real large ones is the Locust Street project, two hundred twenty three thousand dollars. And then there's the larger figures for our utilities are the depreciation in there. But this is just first reading. If you look at this and you have specific questions, we'll answer them tonight or we'll answer them before you have second reading on it and kind of go from there. And then we'll have another budget amendment, May, June, at the fiscal year end.
It's forty one thousand expenditures in sanitation. Is it appropriate? I mean, that's not going to cover the full year. We know that. Well, and it's probably too hit or miss to all now. And yeah, that's what I think. It's just, yeah, it's, yeah, we're right now. We got facts. Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, we got facts. All right, any other questions? Can you entertain a motion?
Move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten eighty seven.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. C, ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten eighty eight. Again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to convert Conway Street and Gray Street into one-way streets in the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and more accurately described within the body of this ordinance.
Mayor and commissioners, as you know, this was a recommendation from MTS after we reached out to them to take a look at the situation. Very narrow streets and they're parking in the street. You almost can't get through there. So we recommend that we go ahead and make both of these streets one-way. And you, if I remember correctly, you enter in on Conway and you'll be exiting back onto Air Mines on Gray.
Yeah, that's what Michael said. And it needs it. Lord. Any questions? Can you entertain a motion?
I make the motion that we pass on incident number twenty twenty one ten eighty eight, making it a one-way street for the safety of the people.
Are you making that motion? I forgot to also say this passed through the planning commission last week as well.
Good.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. D, ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten eighty nine, an ordinance repealing and replacing Title fourteen zoning and land use control, Chapter two zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code.
Mayor and commissioners, this impacts any area that is currently zoned neighborhood commercial where it will allow single-family and two-family dwellings. This has been something that the planning commission has asked us to look at for quite some time now. And there's at least three, three zones that came in front of them. They felt like their hands were tied without options. So this will, anywhere in the city that's currently zoned neighborhood commercial, it will allow single-family and two-family. And this also passed through the planning commission last week. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that, Scramberry?
Basically, because it had came up more than once and we had a couple of houses that we do have located in downtown area and stuff. It was not, not done for one person by the record. It was done for the community and the city at large.
And that's on? Correct.
Yeah.
All the reasoning from the planning commission are in the fourth whereas paragraph. For y'all review.
Well, we said when we wrote this initially back whenever it was, that we were going to make some mistakes and we would make them right when we did. And this is our first chance. So any other comments or questions? Can you entertain a motion?
Move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten eighty nine. As presented.
Corey, we need anything else? You need to say anything else, Chris?
Well, about the reasoning of the planning mission?
Boy, the planning commission found that the proposed update to the zoning on this is in agreeance with the current land use plan because it will provide continuity in a good transition between the downtown commercial district, which allows for upstairs residential units and the other residential zones. Will add to the walkable and the livability of downtown. The planning committee also found that the city has a need for residential properties, a condition that has changed to a significant extent to what the property owners would not benefit a small group of property owners and would greatly benefit the general public.
Why don't we change to where you made the motion?
And then I'll second.
There we go. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Scramber made it and you seconded it. Okay.
I wish I could leave what you told me, really. Okay, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have been there.
That's perfect.
It's fine. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. E, ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten ninety first reading, an ordinance amending the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee's flood plan management program.
Yes, mayor and commissioner, we're doing something where the state performs an audit. They have not audited this for at least over five years since I've been here, six years. And they came through and they want some additional required language, language in our ordinance and some changes. And that's what you're in front of you and know what you have is marked up with yellow and, and red. And we're, we're going to finalize in that before second reading, but it's something that they say needs to have passed by Ja- January.
Basically, the state gave us four things that we needed to revise. But when we're going back through it, our numbers aren't matching. So we may end up recommending that you just adopt a whole.
Brand new.
Brand new one so that it matches exactly like what the state.
And the brand new one can be the second reading.
Yeah, but it, it, all of the changes that they're recommending are in the draft. But if it looks totally different next time, it's because.
So it doesn't matter that this one's not building completely.
Correct.
We're, we're trying to make sure that it complies with the state, state audit. So that's the goal. And it's going to go to the planning commission in January as well.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
Move that we accept twenty twenty one dash ten ninety.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second you.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. F, resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty four, a resolution to make the internal control policy.
And mayor and commissioners, we have that attached to the, the resolution. As I said before, it coincides with the purchasing policy. We've gone through this with a nine-tooth cone and it's, it represents our current practice. Some of this is a result of us working on a restructuring and finance. We had an employee leave. We're reassigning duties. So rather than having job titles in here, we're trying to say destiny so that we don't have to change this every time a job title changes. And this is basically our bible that we follow when we talk about receding money, spending money, conflicts of interest, all that's going to be part of our internal control policy.
Constant workflow, something like that.
I mean, when you read through it, it just seems like just common sense, but, and, and this is all highlighted in yellow with, with changes. And anything that you see in there that you may have questions on, feel free to contact yourself for Loretta.
It is lengthy. Any comments or questions? Can you entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we pass, resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty four.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. G, North College Street change order approval.
Yes, mayor commissioners, this is, we, a new gas line was built between First Avenue and Adams. And you awarded this bid a few months ago and it was fifteen hundred, one thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents over. Our engineers looked at it and believe that that is warranted. And we can't pay them that amount of money until you approve it. It's different than the contract amount. And I think everything looks like it's in place and I would recommend that you approve this change order.
Fifteen hundred bucks is probably amazing that it's that small of a hundred thousand dollar project. Frankly. Any comments or questions? Entertain a motion?
Move that we approve.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I write offs.
And my understanding, mayor and commissioners, we just need to have in the minutes that you approve the write offs, that they're not in front of you because there isn't anything over fifty dollars. But that gives her the ability to write it off because we presented it in. Yeah, if you'll make a, a motion to vote on that to approve write off.
Anybody got anything we'll see or talk about? We can't talk about it anyway because it's competition.
But it, to me, it's great because there's nothing over fifty dollars.
That's right, considering what we have seen.
Yeah, it, you know, a few, a couple of years back, we, you know, basically increased the deposit amount. Now you're seeing the results of that. We were having quite a lot of write offs at the time. And we increased the deposit. And so now all the deposits are enough most of the time to cover that last month bill so that the justice was not left owing a bill after they moved off. And of course, if they have overpaid, we did refund that difference.
And as a city.
If you want me to list of that one, it's much larger.
Yeah, as a city commission, you are all the board for each of our utilities. So we can't lose money in those utilities. So it's important that we have the deposits where they need to be.
So that being said.
I move that we accept the write offs.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I think we've had everybody speak, signed up to speak. Anybody got anything else they'd like to bring up?
Also, the income taxes, the notices in the paper again. Check the list and call people on it.
Yeah.
A gentleman, I haven't got his name. He was here Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday night. And one of the suggestions that he came up with is that they would like to have a notification sign at the community center on what's going on at the community center. And they also felt this would be a good way to put other notices about things, public notices and stuff appear at city hall. I'm passing it on.
That's been suggested before and it's a very expensive sign.
It's been suggested to put it downtown.
Well, they felt like the community center, because the community center holds events too that they don't know about. And they said signs at the schools aren't as equitable as they used to be, which they're not. Uh, it's a little bound, but yeah. That is one of the things. And the second thing, I'm just like anybody else. I want cats gone. I'm tired. They tore up my chairs, chatted everything in my yard. I'm going to be ugly down the freeze. So I need somebody to do some.
Contact the.
They want to come and get, catch them and spade them and bring them back. They don't stop there from chanting everything in my front porch. They're not my. They're not my cat.
Well, I don't disagree with you, I got them around my house, and I've called, I've called the humane society, that's the reason why, or the animal control, let me rephrase that.
I was told by them, they would come and spade them, I mean, come pick them up and spade them and bring them back.
I'll check on that.
And then the next thing of is, is, uh, you know, the black and white, Mr. Pew, you know, he needs to stay out of my yard, too, can you get him taken out, so?
I don't know.
We have, we're there probably with conks.
Oh, Mr. Pew.
Yeah.
You lost me there, but I get it now.
I mean, chasing my dog, the people going spraying him, because he already done got my neighbor's dog. People miss, she always call me and tell me they just sprayed, meant to head it to your yard. My dog's so stupid coming to the house when you tell him to, so, yeah, but, uh, I did call animal control about that, too, and they came trapped out in my yard, because I have dogs, but my neighbor here don't have dogs, and he walks straight across. Besides, they have a Merry Christmas and roll tide.
It's a natty.
Merry Christmas and roll tide. All day, every day. Merry Christmas. We are in Tennessee.
That's why we're going to watch the tide roll.
That's right. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn. I move, got a motion and a second, all those, I oppose, you're out of here, everybody have Merry Christmas, thank, thank y'all for coming.
Y'all know that we're supposed to Thursday, Friday, and then next week is Happy Day Friday.